Beth, is there anyone on the participant list that Natasha will not be able to identify?
Natasha, I think we do have a few visitors, but I think you can see their names, Katie and Sandra. Is that correct Natasha? You can see that? Yeah. And I think that one of them, maybe both, wanted to do, want to do a public comment, just so you know Martha.
Okay, great, thanks. All right, so let's move right to comments from the public on items not on the agenda. Katie or Sandra, do either of you want to comment?
Hi, this is Katie Ballard.
Hi Katie.
I would like to make a public comment.
Okay.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it. I just want to start by saying, Katie Ballard, I'm a parent of three kids in EWSB. And first and foremost, I want to thank the amazing educators working with my kids. It has not been easy by any means, but it has been really amazing to see all of them come together and work really hard to try and meet the needs of my kids. I would say, as a parent, I have found it very challenging to navigate all of the different buildings and to try and engage in conversation that are important and necessary for each of my children without feeling like I am dropping the ball. Because there are a lot of things that seem to not be totally followed through on. And I just want to bring that to the administration's attention, because as an advocate, I'm hearing a lot of that as well. It just seems like it would be really great to have some support for parents and staff around, how do we work collaboratively to ensure the conversations are continuing even when we aren't face to face? So I really appreciate all of your time. And I really hope to see more thought about how we can all work together to ensure that communication happens. Thank you all.
Thanks Katie. Sandra? Did she want to make a, okay, Sandra says she's not commenting. Okay, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone want to pull any items from the consent agenda? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion that-
Martha, you have Diane raised her hand.
Oh, I'm-
That's okay.
I would like to pull the minutes from April 13th for correction.
Okay, so we'll do that. Is there anything else? Okay, then I will entertain a motion that we approve the consent agenda. You've got to give me a second here, because I need to pull up the appointments. Okay.
Diane, is your hand still raised again, or is it not lowered?
No, I lowered it.
Oh.
It says it's lowered on my end, how's that?
Okay, maybe Brian can lower that, since he's hosting.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion that we approve the consent agenda consisting of warrants, consisting of the following professional appointments. Jackie Lynch as the 544 Coordinator for the High School. Alyssa Faro as an English Language Arts Teacher at EMS. Keith Lane as the Social Studies at Essex High School. Preston Randall as a Middle School Counselor at EMS. Terry Gafford as an HLL Teacher at Hiawatha. Lindsay Paquette as Special Educator at ADL. Andrew, Andrew Roy as the Inter Director of Counseling, School Counseling at Essex High School. Kayla Karoo as a Math Teacher at Essex High School. Catherine Littlefield as a Student Assistant Counselor or Prevention Coordinator at Essex High School. Also, to approve leave of absences for Katie Kolder, a teacher at Founders Memorial School. And Beth Kenny, a sixth grade teacher at ADL, who's requesting appoint two FTE leave. Now, if you'll stay with me for a second, I'll get back to the rest of the consent agenda, hopefully. Okay, so in addition to those leave use and appointments, approval of warrants and approval of the school board meeting minutes from April 7th. Phew, would anyone be willing to take that motion?
So moved, Kim.
Thanks, Kim. All the hosts in favor, say hi.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Diane, April 13th.
Okay, what I was finding is that Carl Yan Do, we have a Yan Do or Yan Dow? There's a, either he has, on his resume, it's Y-A-N-D-O. In the minutes, it's Yan Dow with a W. So I'm kind of going, all his, all his official information seems to be Yan Do with just the zero, just the O. So I'm making a motion that we correct that to go with what's on his resume.
Okay, let's do that with the understanding that Natasha will double check with Deb Anderson to make sure we have it right.
Very good, thank you.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion that we approve the minutes from the special meeting on April 13th. I have it corrected.
So moved.
Aye.
Okay, thanks Brendan. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Okay, thank you. All right, next we have our new Director of Technology Innovation with us this evening. Beth, would you like to introduce this part of the agenda?
I would be happy to. So Peter Drescher is our new Director of Technology Innovation and Innovation. So he came to us from the Agency of Education. This is the first opportunity that we've had him come to the Board to present. And we have specifically asked him to talk about the tech, the technology during this COVID time, since he was with us, I think, maybe two weeks before this hit?
A month.
You were, oh, a month. You were there that long?
A month before everyone went home, a month, yes, so yeah.
Oh, I don't have as much sympathy for you anymore then.
Exactly.
So anyways, so I've asked him to come to talk to us about what he's been up to with it, which is a lot. And then another time, we will have Peter to come back to really get into what he's done with the district and his thinking for future and all of that. I do have to say that Brian and I comment on this often. We are so pleased and happy that Peter, for one, is with us. And also that we combined and created that job description that is, has that educational component. And Peter certainly has shown the value for us in doing that. So, thank you Peter, and it's all yours.
Well, thank you Beth, I appreciate that. I'm sorry that I didn't get a chance to meet with you all face to face before we went into this world, which has become our new normal, I guess, but I'm definitely a social person, so it would have been nice to have done that. But anyways, here we are. So I think what I'm going to do is I've got a couple of slides, I'm going to share my screen. I've got a couple of slides to show some talking points and whatnot, some statistics on some of the things we've been doing. And then, you know, I'll open it for questions for, that you might have around, you know, things that you're thinking about. You know, I've touched a little bit on some of the future stuff, and we may, we may talk a little bit about that. But we'll start with where I go here, so. So just, just kind of starting, somebody just voiced, you can see my screen, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
Just checking, all right. So anyways, so as Beth said, you know, I was getting into this for a month. I had, I had yet to learn where all the schools were, when we went into remote learning and students went home. So of course, one of the first things we needed to do was we needed to get devices to students so they could do remote learning while they were home. So today, in fact, we just did a few more on Monday, we're going to do a few more tomorrow too as well. But we have so far deployed almost 3,000 Chromebooks out into the community from all the schools. This is not, of course, every student, and we, and I want to talk a little bit about that, how we, how we got to those numbers. Originally, the high school and the middle school, those students took them when they left, when they, when they exited the schools on March 16th or whenever it was. So they, they already had some, and I think you all know, the high school had a one-to-one program, so they just took their devices with them. We then went to the other grade levels, three through five, and had a couple of deployment times where we had students come or parents come and pick up devices. We had some ways that we did that, we had some that went through the school, some that we went to kind of isolate the locations. Most typically, the guidance hallway at the high school. And then there became a need for K2 to have some kind of device, because there were a lot of things that were sent home that required having a device. So the way we approached that one is we allowed that parents and teachers could kind of like work together and, and make the decision for their children about whether they wanted to have a, you know, a device at home or not. So not all K2 students chose to have a device, but we, we did serve the ones that wanted to have one. So at this point, that's, that's what we got out there. I think you know too, we've been using video conferencing as a, as a huge tool in this whole new normal, where you, we've allowed, we're supporting and allowing two platforms. Google Meets is one that we're supporting, and also a number of Zoom conferences, or Zoom is also the other platform that we support. So we've had good success with those. You can see these averages, you know, 5,500 calls per week on Meets. I mean, there's, there's a lot of different things going on with that. That's classroom things, that's student to student, that's a teacher, you know, having one-on-one conferences with people, teacher to teacher, all those kinds of things. And the same with Zoom as well. Zoom probably more so in classroom situations, teachers reaching out. Zoom kind of got ahead of us a little bit in the curve. When this first came about, it kind of nationally, Zoom offered free licenses to teachers, or free, I won't say licenses, but free versions of Zoom to teachers. And a lot of teachers jumped into that, and were comfortable in the platform at some familiarity. So we decided we'd continue to support that. We use, we have a Google environment, and you can see almost, you know, 730,000 files Google Docs added into our Google environment since we started in mid-March. This, this ended up being a tool we really relied heavily upon going into the initial phase of this. We created some shared folders and shared documents where we allowed grade levels to share resources with each other. It worked out pretty well. We had a couple, couple bumps in the road with it, but we kind of smoothed it out. And I think within a couple of weeks, we had things working pretty smoothly around that. So a lot of teacher-created things, a lot of student-created pieces within that. We also continued our Help Desk support. I'm not sure if you know, but the Help Desk, we run, we have two, two full-time staff doing that. You know, within the time of the COVID thing, they've, you know, fielded over 500 calls. That does not include emails as well. So lots of emails and calls to the Help Desk around supporting. And that's not just for, that's for students, teachers, and families at home too. We offered that out to families at home as well. I know the last one is kind of interesting, but emails generated since COVID started, 2.7 million emails. So I don't know how you feel about email, but anyways, that's, that's where we're at with the, with emails. So a lot of traffic that way. I'm just going to talk quickly about some of the work that's going on. You know, we've got a, you know, K-12 remote, district-owned supported technology. That's all those Chromebooks are out there. So, you know, we have a responsibility for making sure they're continually working and that students are comfortable using them, families feel comfortable using them. We provided some guidance around that, we've got some documents we've sent home, talking about how parents can work with, you know, having, having students at home, working remote with classroom situations. We tried to do quite a bit of help with families with Wi-Fi access. We know that there's families at home, probably some on this call, that have, you know, multiple students at home. They may be working, the parents may be working from home as well, so they're using a device, they're using their Wi-Fi. So, you know, just kind of stretching that resource at home. And we tried to provide some guidance and, you know, tips and tricks and things that people could do to kind of maximize that at home. I mentioned the Help Desk thing. Initially, we had extended hours. We're currently doing just kind of regular workday hours, the five days a week, eight to four. We've noticed the traffic has slowed down a little bit, but, you know, still pretty steady. We, one, one of the issues we had is we have a number of families in the district that have no internet access. So we decided we would try to work with them and try to provision something for them. What we've come to, because many of the providers don't have hotspots, the actual hotspots that they can provide, so we've ended up going to buying, not buying, but purchasing leasing smartphone situations, and then turning on the personal hotspot on this, on the cellphone and getting it to families. We've been doing that for the last couple of weeks. Right now, we've got about eight deployed out there, and those folks are very happy to have some internet access and be able to have their students working on their schoolwork. One of the things that's been really helpful of that, we've solicited the services of Green Mountain Messenger Service, and they're helping us to kind of get some of those devices and hotspots out to families. And we've been doing that for like the past week or so. Brian Don, he started up that and working really well. Of course, what's great about that for us is it lets off the, lets teachers off the hook in thinking they need to deliver things to families. We really want to, you know, minimize the, the contact that teachers have with families in their homes. So we've, and Green Mountain Messenger Service has some, a protocol that they're following to do that. So we're really pleased with that so far. Integration specialists are providing, this is the technology integration specialist, providing extended hour support. Those folks have been working really hard. They're getting, you know, I can say that they're probably working from seven to six every day, fielding phone calls, emails, things on support, on using particular pieces of software, devices. This is in addition, of course, to the Help Desk, but, you know, all kinds of that, you know, familiar face support, because these are folks who are usually working in the school buildings, doing integration support through the day when we have, well, when we were back at, had regular school hours that took place in a physical building, so. The last thing, we're also doing Repair Depot hours. We have two days a week. Right now, we're doing it at the EHS Guidance Lobby, nine to 12 on Wednesdays, and one to four on Mondays at ADL. That's an opportunity for families to bring in a device. If there's a, you know, broken charger or something's not working on the device, they can bring it in. The nurses are helping us keep everyone safe and practice social distance. They deposit the device in a bin, we bag up at the second device and leave it on the table, and they can pick it up, kind of do a swap out there, so. That's what we're, that's what we're doing. That's the work we're doing right now, to kind of support what's going on remotely. And, you know, of course, fielding numerous phone calls from principals and teachers and all the folks that are involved in this, to make sure everything's kind of running smoothly. So I'm going to, I'm going to stop sharing right there and let you ask questions if you want about that. I have a little more to talk about, maybe stuff as we're moving forward, but I'll, I'll stop, and we can, we can take a couple of questions, if there's any.
Okay, Pat has a question.
Hi Peter, appreciate you coming on board. My question is about the, actually the email that I sent, I sent an email to Beth, and just so the rest of the Board has some background on it. The students use Google as part of the, you know, suite of services that we have. And over the vacation, they turned off the ability for them to do video chats and, you know, just voice chats as well. I wanted to talk a little bit about that, if you could, just because, you know, in this instance, you know, I just wanted to know that, I know that you had mentioned about, you know, some concerns about bullying behind it.
Yeah.
I wanted to know a little bit more about how you sort of came to that decision. I'm not trying to put you in like a hotspot all of a sudden. I'm more just, I'm more just concerned that, you know, for, you know, the older kids who still have that ability turned on, the, you know, nine through 12, you know, they're the ones who generally have the ability to get another access to a program, you know, a Skype, a Snapchat, or whatever. But for my daughter, an only child, you know, that chat was the only way that she had to contact any of her friends at school. You know, she's not old enough to create a separate social media account on her own. You know, but the stuff that was integrated within the platform already was something that already had her friends. So it was something that my wife and I felt comfortable with her using. I certainly understand the bullying issue, and you had talked about in your email, you know, things that you were looking into to mitigate some measures of control around that. I know you guys are in a very difficult situation, which is again, you know, I'm not looking for anything critical. I just kind of want to understand, like, what you guys are looking at to help, you know, students who are, you know, at that lower grade level, who are really lacking in the ability to communicate with their peers and their friends. You know, you know, by necessity are forced to use technology to do that now. But, you know, when we have to take away tools like that, you know, do you know, or are you thinking of a turnaround time for when you might come up with something as an alternative, or different measures, different controls? Just wondering if you could talk a little bit about that.
Sure, sure, glad to talk about that. So, I mean, I'll say from the onset, you know, all of this is a moving target. And, and, and that's one of the things, and I'm, you know, I think you heard Beth say, you know, I came from the Agency of Education. I built a really good network, I feel like, from around the state. So all of the people who are in my role, we're all struggling with this right now. Clearly, Google is struggling with it as well, because we've seen, just in the last four or five days, they've made a number of changes to the platform, integrating some things into calendars, things like that. So they understand there's some, there's some issues with it too. So it's one of those, you know, we're only as good as, you know, what we're hearing from the field. And, you know, I rely a lot on the integration specialists to be the folks that are coming back and telling us, you know, what they heard from teachers, where the concerns are, those, those sorts of things. And this one came up, has come up a number of times, where, you know, they feel like what's happening is kids are initiating these calls on their own. You know, and I know there's other places they're initiating calls on their own, but this seemed to be a targeted one that was happening. So we, we had originally done this about, I think it was two weeks ago before break, we did it, and we kind of experimented a little bit, and then inadvertently turned it back on, and I don't know. So we have struggled with it, and I can say honestly, from my perspective, just, you know, reflecting what you're saying about your student having that tool, that opportunity, I'm always a little reluctant to just take something away, because that reduces the learning opportunity that students have with it, to be better using it and better behave with it, so. But in this case, we felt like it warranted at least a period to see, you know, how much impact we'd have on doing it. And, you know, the integration specialists are working really hard on finding some alternative chat features that might work and allow the teachers to have a little more control with it. So they've been working on that as well. But, you know, we made the call, as I say, before break, and, and, you know, shut it off that Friday afternoon when we left, but um.
Yeah, I'm very sympathetic, because you guys are in a very difficult position. It's a very difficult, you know, time.
Yeah.
We're all kind of learning on the fly with that. I think I just, you know, at least, you know, speaking as the parent for someone who's in that age range, I just want to, you know, make sure we're also remembering that, you know, for, you know, those, maybe not as much the K, you know, K or one, but, you know, for a third, fourth, fifth grader, you know, that may be right now the only platform that they have to communicate with their peers. And, you know, the period of mental adjustment that we're looking at, you know, is, is, is something that, I mean, really, you know, this is a, this is an incident of trauma for most of these children. You know, so the ability to reach out to their peers is, I think, a crucial one for them. And, you know, there just may not be another alternative than what the schools are providing right now. So, you know, not anything, you know, critical. I think that you guys have done an amazing job over the last six weeks or so. Just wanting you guys to sort of keep that in mind, you know, as you guys move forward, and then think about, you know, how you're using the communications, you know, that there's, you know, just as much as there is instances of bullying, I think that there is some really great communication tools that, you know, I have seen, you know, being done, you know, with, with the access that they had to their friends.
Yeah, yeah. I would agree, and, and we're hearing stories every day of the really positive and, and sort of, you know, innovative and exciting things that people are doing in this remote learning environment. I, I just, I'll just very briefly share a couple that I, that I do want to share. We were talking today with some of the integration specialists, and I'm just talking about, you know, a great activity, a math teacher went out in a driveway one, one day, dragged her husband outside with her with her cellphone, and they, and they filmed, you know, her doing some kind of math activity on her sidewalk with chalk, encouraging like other, I think it was fourth graders they were doing with, encouraging them to do the same thing, go outside, you know, do some of their math. I don't know, there was some kind of Scotch, hopscotch board she was doing to set it up, but that's great, you know, I mean, those kinds of things. A physics teacher, somebody was talking today about the physics teacher at the high school level, he has set up a green screen. I don't know, I don't know if you're familiar with the green screen, but it's the thing where you, you know, you, you put it in a background and green allows you to have other images with it, yeah. With have other images in the background.
Yeah, I've, I've, I've worked at telecom for 20 years, and I actually have a psychology background, so this is kind of a weird time.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, but where I'm finding that both of those backgrounds have a lot to do with, you know, how we're coping today.
Right, right. Anyway, so this teacher has set up a green screen in their, in their basement, and is using all kinds of different backgrounds and things that they're doing to do, you know, illustrate different things in physics, so. You know, and sometimes we're finding today, we're finding teachers that, you know, have not been people very versed in technology, and suddenly, and, and they didn't have much time to get there, but they are there now, and they're really starting to open up and do some pretty creative things with it, so it's kind of interesting.
Awesome, that's great. Thanks so much, Peter.
All right, you bet.
Brendan.
Albert, you have a, you have a-
No, Brendan has a question.
Sorry, all right.
Hi Peter, it's, I'm sorry to be meeting you under such circumstances, but welcome to the district. And kudos to you and the team for taking our district remote so quickly. The numbers are pretty impressive, and the experience of my two kiddos has been pretty good so far. So I was just wondering, more from almost a technical standpoint, have there been any special security considerations that you've had to think about or navigate to get everyone to be working safely from a remote location?
You know, we have, it came upon us pretty quickly, and we have some things, some things were in place. Some tools were in place on the devices for, you know, just keeping, in our Google environment, it kind of filters domain-wise for, for things that are, students may be searching for, that kind of thing. Some districts have been using something called GoGuardian. We didn't, that was not in place when we did it. Some districts have been using something called GoGuardian. We didn't, we, that was not in place when we did it. That, that allows you to have a little more control on the devices when you deploy them remotely. But, but, you know, I mean, and, and I'm knocking on, what did I say this? We have had a pretty, a pretty good run, um, since we've done that. With the security measures we've had, a lot of it, I think, has been more in, um, working with the teachers and going, doing some communication through Ben Dickey. And just trying to get, uh, you know, some, some supervision happening in the, in the household around, you know, where students might be using these devices, what kinds of things that they're doing, um, you know, with them, uh, you know, limiting time with that, screen time with students in doing that. So, you know, there are some things we've done, but, but, you know, maybe if it, if we had a little more time, there definitely would have been some other things we could have taken advantage of, but.
Right, right. Well, you know, one of the things, I don't know if this translates to the field of education, but I know in the, in the, on the corporate side, there's been a real spike in, uh, phishing attacks and other email scams, uh, as people have suddenly, you know, spread out, uh, into these different locations, sometimes working, uh, without a VPN to sort of give them that extra level of protection. So I don't know if that's happening in the educa- education space, but it's definitely happening in other industries.
It's happening in the education space and I can, I can tell you today, we had a SFOs, uh, and I, I, something that came in today that was, uh, there was an attack and we, and we actually were successful at, um, you know, mitigating that pretty quickly. You know, part of it is, of course, I, I rely heavily on, we have, um, a, a group called the Net Administrators. Network administrators, Steph, um, Moore is one, Craig Donan is another, and Mike Finn. I don't know if those names are familiar to you. I'm, I'm sure they are. Um, but those three guys have been really at the front lines of, um, keeping all that up to date and do that. So, yeah, and, and as I say, like today, we had an incident and we, and we caught it and were able to mitigate that. So, yeah.
Okay, thanks Peter. Um, anybody else have a question? Okay, Al?
Yes, uh, hi Peter. Um, I hadn't, uh, I missed you at the, at the previous meeting. And, uh.
I, I was not at the previous meeting.
Oh, okay. When they had the.
So you didn't miss me.
When they had the introductions. But I did, I'm making a list of questions, but I wanted to, uh, check in with one because it's a new development. On the Comcast system now, uh, there was an article on WCIX concerning Comcast, when they discovered a number of students that were unable to connect, actually ran new optical lines out to those locations. Comcast just recently added a button at the top. It's like an SAP button. Only the receiving party can receive whatever you're saying in their language, which eliminates and reduces the amount of translators that the school might need. I wasn't, wasn't sure you were aware of that, but things are moving so quickly. I thought it was a very unique development by Comcast. Just wanted to share that with you.
Yeah, sure. That's great. And honestly, I was not aware of that and, uh, that's good news to have because we just, in fact, again, today, we had a question from one of the integration specialists about, um, some translation that has to happen with, uh, a, a student, a particular student who needs something read to them. So, yeah, I, 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 I'll, I'll look for that. Maybe, um, could you email me and we could, and, and you said you had a list of questions. So if you want to email me, we can, we can have a further discussion if you want to do that.
Yeah, excellent. Well done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, um, I have one question for you, Peter. So, um, do you have an estimate of how many students at this point do not have access to remote learning?
Are, are you talking about, um, do not have access to the internet or don't have a device in the home?
Well, can't participate in remote learning. So I guess it could be either.
Honestly, I, I, I don't have an answer for that. I, 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 I mean, we have been tracking very carefully the students who don't have internet access and addressing them. And, and I've been, we have been tracking less, the students who, for whatever reason, the parents decided not to take a device home or have a device sent home. So, uh, so, so honestly, I haven't really tracked that because there's various reasons that they might not have done that. Uh, you know, and we're, and we're kind of leaving that up to the parent, teacher relationship and, and how that, that goes down, but, um.
So how many would you say approximately don't have internet access that would like to participate?
You know what I mean? I, it, it's interesting. When we initially gathered that information, we had, eh, I think there were 45 students that we had, um, that indicated they had no internet access at home. I created a little task team within the technology department. There were four individuals, uh, that worked on this. And what they did is they, you know, went to our Power School Information System, um, gathered all the information, their phone numbers, et cetera, got word out to all those families and many of the conversations, where many of the conversations they said were, you know, they called up and the family would be like, well, you know, I know, I, I know about this Comcast thing. I was about to sign up tomorrow. We're gonna get it. In some cases, they helped them fill out the application and do that. So in the end, we've, we've, we've narrowed it down. As I said before, we had eight families that we provided something to them for doing, for getting access to the internet. The rest of the people, they, I, I, I actually, a couple more have come forward since then that we kind of followed back on. But the rest of them seemed to have something that they were getting underway to do that. So, um, we've kind of continued to leave this open and allow the principals, if they hear of these cases, that they can get word to us and we'll follow up. But at this point, I, I think we've covered everyone who indicated they had that need in their house. So.
Wonderful. That's good to hear. All right. Do any other board members have questions? All right. If not, thank you so much, Peter. And we will have you back at a future meeting to talk more about your vision for the future, hopefully post pandemic and, um, your ideas about technology integration. But thank you very much for taking time to be with us tonight. And thank your team for all they're doing to help our students and teachers and families in the district.
Yes, I, I have a great team. They're a fantastic group of people. It's really been great working with them. I thank you all very much. Thanks.
Thank you, Peter. You can hang out with us or you can leave if you have other things to do.
All right. I, I, I might hang out a little bit and then I'll, I'll exit at some point, but thanks.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks, Peter. All right. We'll move on now to talk about our FY21 proposed budgets. And, uh, that, there are a few things I want to say to frame this discussion. And Beth and Brian may have some things to add as well. And then I'll open up. So I have been working with Andrew Brown, who's the president of the, um, Village Trustees. And with, um, Susan Hill-Macnamara, I believe that's right, um, who's the town clerk for Essex. And also the town clerk for Westford to try to find a date. I sent you the latest directives that have, have come from the Secretary of State's office. It was interesting that in the email, they're still saying they're not sure it's worth the risk to actually hold an election, but the village seems interested in moving forward. So, um, I'm guessing we probably should too. And they're meeting tonight. Um, and they're looking at June 2nd. And I indicated that we could look at that date as well. There will be a lot of encouragement for her people to vote by absentee ballot. But the village is not interested in mailing ballots to every voter, which was an option that could have been considered. As far as the budget goes, there's so much at play. I'm looking forward to a thorough discussion tonight. But let me just talk about a few things. First of all, there's the chance that if we don't change the budget that we originally proposed, that some people will think we're being tone deaf about the pandemic. I will say that Andrew Brown indicated that he didn't think, and of course he can't speak for the whole board, but he doesn't think the village is going to change their proposed budget. We've been working with the legislature. That, the ideas that they're considering are far from finalized, which makes things even more difficult. I will say, both the House and Senate are very sympathetic to the school districts that don't have budgets. And to the fact that we're in a very different position now than those districts whom are able to successfully vote at the beginning of March. There are eight other districts that will be voting on their budgets for the first time. I've been trying to find out if any of them are thinking about changing their budget prior to bringing it to a vote. To the best of my knowledge, no one is planning to do that. There is conversation about, at the state level, about, um, some options for districts that don't have budgets. That would replace just during this pandemic. The present statute that allows districts that don't have a budget by July 1st to, um, borrow up to 87% of the previous year's budget. The legislature doesn't feel that's really a good option. When you use that option, you have to continue to propose new budgets and asking the community to vote until you successfully, um, get a positive vote for a budget. The Senate is, um, only interested in, right now, in providing, without a last year's level of education spending. If we were to do that in lieu of getting a positive vote from the community, we would have to cut 1.5 million dollars from our budget. The House seems, the House Ways and Means and Education Committees have, um, been meeting together. They're much more sympathetic to the fact that conditions have changed so dramatically for districts like ours. They have been talking about allowing a board to authorize, um, the budget that they originally planned to put before the voters. It's unclear what's gonna happen. There is quite a big difference between the House and Senate. The other thing that's out there is how is the state going to address the deficit in the education fund? Which, there's a deficit for the year they were in. There will be even a bigger deficit in the coming year. Some of the things that have been talked about is the possibility of clawback a certain percentage of every school budget in the state. One of the things I think we have to think about is if we reduce our budget now, then we're putting ourselves in a much different place than districts who passed their budget on March 3rd, especially if a clawback were to happen. There's also a discussion about perhaps trying to pay that, the education fund over a period of years as opposed to trying to do it all in FY21 and/or FY22. I think those were the things I wanted to talk about. I'm sure I'm forgetting something. Brian and Beth, are there things that you would like to add?
I think Martha, that you covered it. I know that I've had many conversations with superintendents who also do not have a past budget and also with Jeff Francis, um, and Sue from BSBA. And there's daily conversations going on and what will be happening with the Senate and the legislators. So, that's, I don't have anything new to add. Just that we're working on it, trying to get information.
No, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Brian. I just wanted to confirm that it, it appears really evident that there'll be a clawback of the CARES money somehow, some way. So there's, um, that money is coming from the federal government and by its statute has to go directly to, to local districts in proportion to our Title I funding. So it's tied into our free and reduced population, of course, free and reduced population prior to, uh, the pandemic. And there's been four or five or six different ways already floated by the AOE and others with to shorting money, not reimbursing money that was otherwise thought of and so forth. So, I think that CARES money is, will help the state in addressing some of the current year deficit. But it, it's not going to be something that's going to support us. And even with those projections, they're still seeing between 150 million to $200 million shortfall in the Ed Fund going into next year. So the, the, the size of the hole is sort of unprecedented at this point in time.
That sounds much higher than what I remembered, Brian, but I, I don't quite have the figure at the, to my tongue. I would say that Brad James did make it clear to the House Education Committee last Friday that our budgets were already built into any deficit that they're protecting, even though our budgets haven't, our budget and some others haven't passed yet. Kim, you wanted to add something and then I'll go to Todd who has some.
I was just gonna indicate, I tried to by looking at minutes of those that haven't, um, proposed a budget yet to their communities, not those that had to go back and revote. See if they'd made changes to their previous budget. Some of the dates were out further and it didn't, or hadn't had meetings more recent. or hadn't had meetings more recently, so it was difficult to see anything from minutes. But I did reach out to the chair, because I know her through the BSBA of Caledonia Cooperative, and they actually had a prepared budget. And they did reconsider and came back with a two and a half percent decrease. But they had class sizes that warranted, I think, the riffing. They did it in the timeline that allowed them to then issue riff notices. And their class sizes warranted, I think it was three and a half fewer staff. And that, you know, allowed them to get to, or helped anyway, in their reconsideration as they reformulated their budget. But the others didn't appear that there had been activity in minutes since March to reconsider their budgets. And I did listen in this morning to House Ed, or whenever it was today. And they seem to be pondering how this divide between their position and the Senate Ed position will be reconciled. And Kate Webb didn't sound as though she could offer any, anything to respond to her committee's queries on that point. And a few of the folks on her committee were inquiring whether or not Senate Ed had taken direct testimony, as they had, because they've heard from many about the devastating effects of a potential heavily funded budget. So there seemed to be no clue as to how this will be reconciled.
So Senate Ed did take some testimony. I testified, the Chair of the Board from Slate Valley testified. But their testimony was certainly not as extensive as the testimony that House Education took. Todd?
Yeah, I was just curious, when you were talking about mailing the ballots to every voter, I believe you only spoke about the villages, is that right?
So mailing ballots to every voter is one of the options that the Secretary of State's Office put forward. Susan McNamara Hill is the clerk for the village and the town. John Sonic is the clerk for our school district. So who, yes, technically, I guess that decision is one that she is making for the village.
I'm just curious if it was mentioned, is it, is it because of cost or effort or both? Because if it's, if it's cost, maybe we can help with that. It just seems a little short sighted.
I think it's more, well, I shouldn't speak for her. She, it's been discussed off and on ever since we, sometime in March, decided that we had to cancel the election. You know, I tried to push for it. She seems very opposed to it. I think it's partially the volume of work involved. Beth, at that time, offered to use some of her staff to help. But for whatever reason, she much prefers just to encourage people to request absentee ballots.
Have you, has the administration spoken with the town and village manager? I'm, I'm just asking because the clerk here isn't elected, they are appointed. So they are not. I, I just find that unfortunate, I guess.
Well, if, if the majority of our board wanted to mail ballots to everyone, we could certainly have another conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Brian, have you talked to Evan?
I haven't talked to him about this topic. We've gone back and forth, he's very pleased with the idea of voting on the same day. Thinks that it delivers a lot on what people have wanted in the community, but that we didn't talk about the methodology.
Wasn't he, Martha, wasn't Evan on those emails that we were all on, so?
Yes, so he certainly knows what Sue's position is.
Right.
He has not contradicted. I assume it's a decision that he and Sue reached together. Other comments about the method of voting? Keely?
I think Andre's hand is up before mine, but I don't know if it's on the same topic.
I can't watch everything at once, but so.
I was just following up on Todd, though, so Andre, I don't know if you're on the same topic or something else.
Keely, why don't you just go ahead?
I, I just wanted to say that, like Todd, I'm a fan of including as many people in the election as possible. I think a relevant data point might be Diane's opinion as one of the people who would have to work the polls. I think as much as there's a lot of work for the village clerk and town clerks sending out ballots, the work of someone who would actually have to staff a physical location if we don't send out ballots to everyone would be more of a concern from my perspective.
So it's, I understand that even if you mail ballots to everyone, you still have to have a physical location where they can come and turn them in the day of the election.
But presumably, many fewer people show up.
I absolutely agree. Okay, Andre?
I share the concerns about mailing out the ballots, but my question actually was, at some point in the future, I'd like to see how we could disengage from our annual meeting and have it earlier because this year brings an awareness of the importance of having it more common to the majority of the district. Because the Westford and Essex Town vote everything in essence on Town Meeting Day. And I'd like to explore how we could disengage from what we have been doing to having more of a common meeting that occurs closer to the Town Meeting Day rather than this late in the season. This, this brings about an awareness of the need for change. And we've been contemplating how we get more people to vote. Having it this late has, has demonstrated that voter turnout is diminishing. And I'm not sure what's going to happen, even if we send ballots out to everyone. So future agenda item, I'd like to see what the process is to change. And so we could have an earlier informational meeting because my understanding, it doesn't have to be 24 hours ahead of the vote, but it has to occur before the vote. And so.
It has to occur within 10 days before.
Okay, so within 10 days, so we could have it Wednesday or Thursday meeting prior to that first Tuesday. As long as we're within the 10, 10 business days, correct, versus calendar?
I'm not sure, I'd have to double check. But Andre, we had a thorough discussion of this topic last fall. And you may recall that we decided to wait to see what would happen with the merger vote this November. Because part of what will happen with that, hopefully, is a common voting date for that one new entity, if there is one. So we didn't want to move forward until we understood what was happening with that. But once that happens in November, then absolutely, you're correct, we'll have a discussion.
Sorry, I do recall that, but I, I don't want it necessarily hinge strictly on the outcome of the merger vote. I, I think this warrants a decision, whatever the outcome of the merger vote is. Thank you.
But I think it will, we'll make a better decision if we understand what the landscape is for the town and the village moving forward.
Okay, very good.
Kim?
Martha, I was just thinking back to Susan McNamara Hill's position on the mailing of ballots. And I thought those exchanges were taking place in a context where it wasn't even allowed by the Secretary of State. And that, I don't know, at least I don't recall that I've been part of exchanges since this new guidance were allowable options. So I, I don't know, do we know for sure that Susan is not willing or interested, I guess I should say, in doing this version? Now that it's been approved, okay.
I have shared that email with you, but she was very clear in an email to me about that. She was not, because she knows we were interested and potentially interested in mailing ballots to everyone. And she was pretty clear that she and Evan, anyway, were talking, and maybe Greg Duncan, were talking about just making this big effort to get people to request absentee ballots, but not send them to everyone. So I, I think, well, let me go to other people who have their hands for it, here's Diane.
All right, so I guess my take at this point in the conversation is to answer Keely that for my staff at this point, who man the polls, because most of them are, I'm a youngster. So it, you know, some of them are concerned about being safe. And I, I can understand that, especially after reading that Wisconsin, people went out to vote. I understand the feeling for obligation. And unfortunately, now there are 30 people who are now ill because they attended voting in Wisconsin. So I would anticipate my staff saying that I probably have a lot of people bailing out. So I'm a little discouraged, on the other hand, with Susan saying that she's not interested whatsoever in mailing ballots out to people. I'd be more interested in finding out what the Elections Department guidance is beyond, because it sounds like it's, everything is in flux, that what, what the Senate's guidance would be as to where to go. Susan's position the last time I saw anything was that she was willing to go through the absentee ballot process. It's something she knows, she knows how much work it is. And quite frankly, if she got doubling the amount of money, or double, she'd probably take the money. But if she got a double amount of requests, she would probably end up having to have a lot of people, a lot of hands, because there's, the ballots really get touched a lot between going, going out and coming in versus somebody showing up at the polls. It hits like twice, three times the amount of, of handling of the ballots. And that's just for her office in, in the town office. I'm not sure what happens in Westford, but I would think it's probably something similar. So it's just that you got 16, 16,000 people down in Essex that we have a potential to be reaching. I would say, quite frankly, it'd be an interesting thing to see if you had an option of not returning it versus returning that ballot. I'd like to see, before I be honest, to see if, because of this mess that we're in right now, if that would be one way of reaching people because things are so disrupted with, the only, only thing happening by communications literally is electronic. There isn't any, there isn't a paper. You know, we haven't really put out anything, the village has not put out anything as communicating this, what's going on. It's literally, you've got to go out of your way to find out electronically how things are going.
So Susan has put her communication about requesting absentee ballots as has the town clerk in Westford. And I think her plan was to continue to do that on a regular basis. Pat? Pat?
Sorry, unmute. I had to unmute myself, it takes forever. Just the.
Are other people hearing, Pat? I'm not hearing you. Pat, we're not hearing you.
Okay, how's that? Sorry, technology. Just really quickly, I think that Susan's biggest reluctance about mailing out ballots to voters who aren't requesting them is more of a manpower issue than is anything else. I mean, I, I know that she's, you know, it would be new for her, but I think that, given her office and how they were at limited numbers with the town offices closed, that they were really short on people, they had, you know, less staff coming in than normal. She just wasn't sure if, she literally had the number of people to be able to conceivably do that. So, I mean, now that they're bringing some people back into the offices, her, the situation may have changed, it may just be something we want to check into. That was the only thing I really had to add.
Okay, I do know she had, said she had people working from home and that this was work that does, well, not, not mailing ballots to everyone, but candidly, absentee requests is something that people working from home could be working on. Just so you know, I realize I didn't say this number. I think I got this number before I testified. I think they thought to mail ballots to everyone would cost them $10,000. Kim?
It just seems as though, from a systemic standpoint, if there's no way to put an ad in the reporter, and to Diane's point, people have to seek out electronic communication. So Front Porch Forum, for instance, if that's where Susan put the information out, again, it, it does expect that people are electronically connected in some way. It just seems to know it's going out to everybody is almost easier to anticipate and plan for than the influx and the trickle and the uncertainty of when requests are going to come, how quickly those need to be turned around and sent out. And then that request comes in and you send out the ballot and the ballot comes back in, it seems like it's requiring twice as much work. And are there fulfillment houses that can do this? Is that a thing? We send out our butterflies from somewhere, presumably not Beth's office? And we maybe have support staff that could help in stuffing? I don't, I'm, I'm not, I'm just falling, sorry. I don't, I'm I'm not, I'm just spit falling, sorry.
To have to meet some manpower we could add to this effort if you want it to push forward.
I do think that we could pull together people to to do the mailing.
So I feel like we need to move to the actual budget discussion. So I'm gonna, I'm going to go through the list of board members and just ask you to say if you think we should try to pursue mailing a ballot to every voter. Al?
Yes, Martha. The answer is uh, the answer is yes, uh, we should mail a ballot to every member. We really do not want to be in a position of um not taking a vote. And hopefully we will not get a no vote because that would result in using last year's number, eighty-one point four mil. It'd be eighty-seven percent of that, so it's a significant reduction. And uh, we really can't do that. So yeah, I support going ahead.
Okay, so what you just said is incorrect, but for now I'm just going to focus on whether people think we should mail ballots to every voter.
That's right.
If we can, yeah. Todd?
Yes.
Okay, um Andre?
Yes.
Um, Diane?
Yes.
Um, Brenton?
Work, oh, I'd like to see us work collaboratively with the town clerk, yeah.
Okay, um, sorry, let's see, Keely?
Yes, it's the right thing to do, it might decrease our chance of a yes vote, but you really should do it.
Okay, Kim?
I echo Keely's sentiment exactly.
Patrick?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Have I missed anyone? Oh, Liz?
Yes.
Okay, and I, me as well, I've been interested in this from the beginning. So um, let me, I think I'll work with John Sonic, who is actually our clerk, and see where things go from there, and I'll try to keep you updated. So now let's move.
Martha, I'm sorry, can I just make sure that I understand? Obviously, if we were going to do it and the village has its own sheet of paper, it should go, I feel like ideally it should go in the same envelope if they were of the same mind, that they would wish to send those out. So however that collaboration would happen, it would seem to make sense to me. It would be quite confusing if village residents voting on their municipal budget had to call for an absentee ballot and we made a decision as a district that we were sending.
Right, no, that's not.
Got it, okay, thank you.
That's not what I was suggesting. I was just suggesting that John, as our clerk, might be the right person to have the conversation with Sue.
Perfect, thank you.
All right. Okay, so let's move on to the discussion of the budget. As things stand now, that budget that we put before the voters on June second would be the one that we approved um in February. The only way that can be changed is if there is a motion to rescind that action. Um, but before we put a motion on the table, I'd just like to hear what people are thinking. Andre, is your hand up or just not taking it down?
No, it is up. Um, my concern is that the current budget year that um we are in, as well as next year, may be impacted by the loss of revenues, so I guess my question is it it has been stated we don't set the tax rate, but yet our actions determine the tax rate. So what degree of confidence can you share that the projected revenue from the state will become reality? Uh, and that's what, there's been some disparaging um mailings, emails from V S B A not painting a very good picture. So I guess I would like to understand what degree of confidence we have that what was projected earlier for revenues to offset the impact on taxpayers would still be forthcoming.
So far, the only discussions I've heard are that the um yield would either be set at the number that was in the December letter or be set at last year's yield. I think if they're going to do, if the legislature is going to do anything to address the deficit, and we still don't know whether the fourth COVID package is going to have revenue for states. Um, I think they're going to go in and clawback money from every district. So I think it's not going to happen by setting different tax rates. I think it's going to happen by going back and telling districts you have ten percent less to spend than your voters approved. Um, Brian or Beth, have you disagreed with that, or Kim, please say so? Todd?
Oh, sorry, I I was just going to say that I had reservations about the budget when we first approved it, so I just, I don't see my vote changing, that was all.
Whoops, Diane?
I I I think we should stay with our current proposal. Um, for the very reason if we have to suffer a clawback, I'd rather go with our current budget than have it be imposed with something from last year. Um, if they take us to last year, then we'll we'll have to deal deal with it. But at this point, I'd rather go with what we've got. And they're already, they're already counting at the state that we're going to go with where we are. Their projections are saying, um, what we've got. I I can't see, why, why, I have experienced in the past that we, that the school districts did stepped up and did, as the legislature committee stepped up and did, um, you know, trying to be, you know, a good student and and then got slapped because they uh, because they were good. So I don't want to experience that again.
Martha, you're muted.
Martha, we can't hear you, you're muted.
Sorry, Al, I was just saying, we're going to have to teach you to raise your hand electronically. But until we do, I see your hand is raised, so, Al.
Okay, Martha, uh, I don't know, it's maybe that the format at the bottom of this is a little different on this computer. I've got three computers here, so I'm not sure why. Can you hear me okay? Okay, I was just going to say, uh, I would stick with the original budget. And the alternative is um a thirteen percent hit. Uh, but I think Andre was right on, we've got a big revenue issue. You know, the Ed Fund is supported by, the tax revenues are collected by the state. Tax, but those revenues are not there. Massive deficits in all uh tax revenue areas. As for the legislature taking action, borrowing, doing something like that, that seems to be off the table for the governor because it would affect uh our bond ratings and credit ratings, and he doesn't want to do that. And then there's the Fed. So we don't really know for sure what's going to happen, but to take that big of a hit, um, I I think uh legislature, feds, whatever is going to have to help. If we don't get that help, then we're going to have to take much more drastic measures. Um, so uh, that's how it looks to me, I think we just have to move forward. We got our best foot forward and uh, see what happens. You know, it's one of those things where we have no control over it. And uh, um, we'll, we'll, we'll do our best to move once we get the final numbers. It's, that's where I'm at.
Thanks, Todd. Brenton?
I guess, um, you know, my, I have significant concerns that the budget will not pass as presented. I think the fact that we'll be taking the existing budget to the voters does show a certain amount of tone deafness on our part. And I guess I, it could be Zoom or it could be that I'm just dense, um, but can somebody explain to me again why we are unable to go back and make a revision to the budget?
It's, it's not that we can't, Brenton, the only way to do it is to make a motion to rescind the action that we've already taken. And then the majority of us would have to approve that motion. Um, I think I would just say, as I said in the beginning, the offsetting to the tone deafness is we're in a statewide system. If it were just us, I would say, yeah, we have to go back and cut the budget because of the present conditions. But because we're in a statewide system, and I don't think this is going to be easy to explain to the taxpayers, but I think we have to try. We would be putting our students at a disadvantage going into whatever actions this state is going to take compared to all the districts, which I think is ninety percent or so, who passed their budgets before the pandemic hit. Um, so, you know, if we were operating by ourselves and collecting revenues by ourselves, I would say there would be no question that we would have to cut the budget. Because we're part of a statewide system, I think it changes the dynamic.
So what what would we do then, Martha, if the budget fails? Can you just remind me what what would be our recourse as a board?
So to some degree, it will depend on what the legislature does for those of us who don't have a budget yet. But even not assume, let's assume they did nothing. He would, we could go back to the voters. We could vote another, we could propose another vote with just seven days' warning. So we could potentially vote again before the end of June. Um, we could, if if that vote didn't pass, we could borrow eighty-seven percent of the legislature's budget and continue to take budgets to the voters until something passed. The wild card is our, is the legislature going to give us the ability to do something without voter approval? Todd?
Yeah, um, I'm sorry, I was just going to say, as a way to kind of move this forward and maybe a backwards approval, the budget would be to make a motion to rescind the originally approved budget amount.
Are you making that motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Could you, just because we had two budget amounts, could we just clarify if the motions are rescind both actions or just one?
I think we're talking about the, not the techno- technical center budget. I think we're talking about the regular E W S D budget for now.
Yes, that's correct.
Um, okay. Um, is there further discussion? All right, um, let's take a mo- vote on the motion. Um.
Can I ask a technical question, Martha?
Sure.
If this fails, are we done discussing the why? Because um I heard from Brian and Beth as we were planning for the agendas and really compelling understanding of the need for the current budget. And I just didn't know if if this fails, are we done discussing the budget? If it should pass? What come, what comes next either way?
I think that's a good point, Kim, and um, I think and um Andre and Keely, I'll get to you in a minute. I think this would be a good time for Beth and Brian to talk about what their thoughts are about what might be coming at us next year.
Sure, I can start and Brian chime in. I I think one of the things that um is staring us in the face is a learning gaps. I don't think that um we can afford to make larger class sizes or cut support staff at this time. I think that our intervention system will need um help in that. We have, you know, um, wanted to do the literacy and math. Those are our targets that we need to raise. Um, and we still, we're not going to let those go. So our intervention system is even more important than it was before this. I feel like the state, as Martha mentioned, could do a clawback. If they do that and we have less money, we will have to start cutting into staffing. Um, there's, you know, we have our large healthcare that came along that um we all know how much that costs, and that was not, um, we did not think that was going to happen. So we have that major expense. Cutting the budget and moving back doesn't help um us to, with that. So again, looking at what can we cut? To go back to the twenty twenty budget, it would be a million and a half. Um, we have put a freeze right now on our hires that are not replacing people, but others such as coaches or um other things that, you know, we really targeted as some needs, but we have put a hold on those, um, which is about five hundred thousand dollars. So um, but I I can't see cutting the budget more with the needs that we have going into because of the pandemic. And I think if a clawback comes along, as Diane spoke to, you know, we do our job and cut our budget, and then we get asked to even give more. Um, and I fear that. I also have, um, I think it was Brian that spoke to the CARES Act. We have that money that will go through the state. I think we don't know what reimbursements we're getting from special education or from transportation. That is unknown. Um, and it could be just replaced with CARES Act, so it's not really new money coming in. It could be the same amount, it could be less. So there are so many unknowns out there that um it's, it's, it makes me nervous to think about all the unknowns and not, and to have a um, a budget and to think about what to cut. I'll stop and Brian can.
Yeah, I I think some of the things that we shared, uh, I'm sure you've seen the Yeah, I, I think some of the things that we shared, uh, I'm sure you've seen the news. Uh, we shared the VPR, um, or NPR story with the board ahead of time, just to try to contextualize the change that we're heading towards. Um, so the idea of, you know, if one of the scenarios is staggered schedules, which could require, you know, quadrupling of transportation, just infrastructure to try to lessen that, how food service would work, what we do with sixty-year-old and, uh, people with compromised, um, health conditions. How do we backfill those positions with long-term subs? How do we address, as Beth called out first and foremost, how do we address the intervention and the learning gaps that we had? I mean, the, the staggering amount of uncertainty and unknowns, um, married with the fact that we have so little control over exactly which scenario we'll be executing, um, because it will be directed by the governor and it will either be funded by the federal government or it won't be funded. Um, but I would say that a good eighty-five percent of our revenues that we budgeted for next year have volatility in them, um, you know, from the ed fund to special ed reimbursement to, um, all the federal funding to our Medicare revenue, um, all the way through the board. So, you know, I, I don't think it's, I, I think the matter is, and this is where the Senate has gotten kind of chunked up in feeling like the House may not be seeing the big picture, is, you know, this is, we anticipate a, a reduction, if not a severe reduction to our budget going into FY twenty-one. We're trying to get to a level playing field with the rest of the state who's going up four point one, four point two percent with our increase of, uh, ed spending going up about two point five percent. So, you know, we, we anticipate severe reductions going into next year and needs that we have never calculated before because of the way we need to operate and because of the things that we're addressing. So I, I think it's, it is not a matter of if we will be reducing our FY twenty-one budget, it will be about where we're starting and how much.
Thanks, Brian. I hope Andre and then Kelly.
So what I understand, um, there's a possibility that the state could mandate a, a reduction in, in all budgets statewide. If that were to occur, then it's implied less revenue as well. But the actual reduction would be less, an actual reduction of the budget. Therefore, uh, lessening the taxpayer's burden because of that, no, the, okay. So what that means is that the ed fund would actually get cut, but the budget amount, okay, very good. Now, Beth, correct me if I'm wrong, but did you infer that there was a possibility of coming back five hundred thousand at this point in time? That would be, the severity would be lessened, but not as much as a, um, greater amount. Is that what I understood, my takeaway?
Right. So when we've put a hold on some of those, um, coaching positions that were in the budget, we have put a hold on that until we know whether our budget has passed or not. So, and that's about five hundred thousand. So, and it's a, it's another position at the high school that's not a coaching position, but one that, um, we found that we, we could wait and hire whether we have a, you know, when we know if we have a budget.
All right, thank you.
To help.
Yes, it does. Thank you very much.
Kelly?
So I guess if I'm understanding this correctly, um, the reason to go forward with our previously proposed budget is to be on a level playing field with everyone in the state who has passed a originally proposed budget um, for when the state starts trying to claw stuff back. Uh, to me, the only reason to try to adjust the budget now is to, um, kind of come to grips with and try to understand what we actually anticipate spending money on next year, which presumably is going to be very different. We may even have a situation where next year, we're doing a lot of this remote learning and people are not in all the school buildings. So we're probably spending a lot more on technology and a lot less on extracurriculars. We don't have as many disciplinary incidents that we're able to deal with. So, you know, there's a lot of vice principals with a lot of time on their hands to be doing technology work or something. So the line items of the way we will be spending money will be very different from the way we anticipated in January and February we'd be spending money. And if we were to undergo such an exercise of trying to anticipate how we will actually be spending money, I think we need to do that about the tech center just as much as we do about the entire budget. Because just because their number is smaller doesn't mean that it's going to be changing any less than the complete district. I don't know if we have any knowledge to be able to make those sort of predictions. I think it would be wise to try to think about what it's going to look like if we don't have people in the school. How does it change our revenue if a lot of parents decide that they'd rather homeschool than homeschool, but not control the curriculum? Um, kind of look at those things, but I don't know if we have enough information to make that a valuable conversation before we put the budget to the voters.
Brian or Beth too want to respond to, I, before they do, Kelly, I would just say, I think that would be very hard to do in time for a two-second vote. Brian and Beth, do you want to add anything?
It would be hard to do, I will, for the two-second vote. We also don't, um, know the costs right now because we're in the middle of it. So we haven't been able to actually even take a breath to reflect on that. And we don't know what the fall is going to look like. It might be more. We might be dealing with classes of twelve. And then what do you do with the other half of the class while they're not there? And we don't want to do that at home. So that means childcare. So we don't, it's really hard to predict what the fall will be. And that's one of the reasons why we shared that article with you too. And in my report, Brian will share, we will both share more what we're thinking about for next year. But, um, that's really hard to predict. It could be more and I would hate to then cut and then.
Yeah, it's, um, you know, there, I, I guess I just want to impress upon that, you know, in some of the most significant decisions that need to be made in order to really start to game out what those impacts will be that are outside of our hands and your hands. We, we won't decide that. We, we didn't even have, we had an option within a template to design our continuation of learning. Um, it was, it was not a broad field for us to just invent and execute. Um, it has never been in our purview to how we did meals and that we needed to do meals, um, even with the idea of meals over April vacation. It's, it's not. So that level of, in which we need to be frontline reactors and build and design an entire system in what already feels like an inadequate amount of time, um, while we don't get to make those decisions. And that's just sort of where we're at. Um, it will be. I mean, I, I don't, I think that if you play this out in a series of different events with a rush to a date of June second, you know, it's great to know that there's a seven-day deadline between one vote and the next. But, you know, we're, we're, this is COVID nineteen time. You know, this is, like, how many days does it take to mail a ballot to every single person if we're able to sort of make that grand bargain with our clerks and our municipalities and then do it again? What, within a day? So that people have them and vote again? And then, and then there's a rescission period. And then there's a second vote. And how many times do you vote? Do you keep going? How far below FY twenty do you go? Um, I mean, they're all questions. I don't, I don't have answers to many of the questions that either get posed to me or I think of myself. Um, and that's why, um, you know, it, it's difficult to really give you guys some concrete information to act upon.
Okay, I've got Kim and then Todd and then Andre and then Brenda. Kim?
Um, thanks, Brian and Beth. I appreciated, um, the way you were able to lay it out as we had talked about this in agenda planning and the way you laid it out again here today. There's no more certainty than there was when we were planning a week or two ago. There's no more clarity coming out of the legislature. And I certainly did go in feeling tremendous concern for the notion of feeling tone deaf to community needs at this time. But I'm also well aware that our students' needs and even those of our staff are not going to be less as we move into whatever the new normal is. And I think that trying to navigate that uncertainty in a strategic way right now would, I just don't see it. We were really thoughtful as you went through the process of our budget process to even add an SEL, I believe Todd helped us see the wisdom in that at the middle level. So I think that we were thoughtful all along about the mission and, and serving students in a way that was aligned with that mission. I am not seeing those needs to have changed. So I feel that, um, we should allow our community a voice in what was strategically considered for the needs of our district and then respond to that to the extent we can, um, so that they continue to have a voice in the process. It would be my preference all along that we are able to get to something that they've approved versus been defaulted to or thrust upon us, I guess. So, um, thank you for sharing the rationale. Um, the needs, I think, are greater and I would be concerned with us going less at this point, knowing what may come ahead.
Okay, thanks, Kim. Todd?
Sure, I was just gonna say that I think it's a little, um, we should be cautious about assuming that the budget as presented will be passed, concerned about, uh, any clawbacks or cuts. And I just wonder if a small adjustment to the budget may, may more, may make more sense than risking a defeat on June second and then wondering about where that puts us for a future vote, future vote, and then what the implications of that may be. That was all.
So Todd, I would just say that that's something I've given a lot of thought to. Um, I'm, if people are going to vote no, I'm not sure that there's an amount of reduction that we could do at this point that I would turn that to yes. Um, and I know that's a judgment column, you know, maybe cutting something would somehow show some good faith. But I'm, you know, we've looked at the numbers. We certainly can't responsibly cut enough to get the tax rate increase for those who pay based on property to anything close to zero. And again, I keep going back to the fact that if we cut now and the budget's defeated and we cut again and then the legislature cuts, I just worry about we're going down that path lead. But it, it's certainly something that I personally have given a lot of thought to.
Right. And I appreciate that. And I just want to say that I don't think that, I'm not saying that our proposed budget doesn't propose a lot of great things. It does. Uh, I'm in support of that. It's just more of the overall picture. So I just wanted to be on the record saying that I don't not support what we're trying to achieve.
Thanks. Um, okay, Andre?
Um, just to clarify, if the state does do a clawback and actually reduces the amount of ed funding coming our way, that doesn't prevent us from reducing the budget in a, um, in reaction. Because even though if we approve eighty-one million dollar budget for discussion, that is the threshold that we cannot exceed for spending, but that doesn't mean we can spend less, that we cannot spend less, correct? So if the state does do a clawback, which is very possible, hopefully not, but we could actually reduce our spending and not have it at the level that was approved.
That's correct. We, we can, you know, like we did with the rescission, we had in the first year, eight hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars that was held back from our transfer from the ed fund. The difficulty is, is that you're, you're doing that in a time period where you have tremendously less flexibility with staff and staff account for a large percentage. And also you, you have no time to account for it in IEPs, in placements, in services. So it, it keeps moving itself down to the parts in which, uh, in the budget are sort of instantly discretionary. Which, you know, do often hit places that have, you know, high stakeholder engagement and involvement and so forth. But, you know, but that's what we had to do the last time. And you know that we don't, we haven't yet, as a new district or even as previous districts, ever executed, you know, the exact budget amount or over. So, you know, we do run somewhat of a surplus in the, the total funding. So, you know, there is some of that. Um, if we did run a deficit because of that for some reason, uh, then we would, we would just have to put that into the subsequent year budget as the first funding.
And, um, I do want to make a point that Diane's point is well taken because I remember as a district, uh, individual districts, we all met the challenges for change, come to find out that it was not a statewide event that many districts, uh, did not necessarily meet that challenges for change and life went on. There was no penalties for not meeting that. Um, so I understand, but in my discussion there, I do support the mission that everybody is trying to fulfill in the outcomes. But given this current situation, this has thrown us a curveball we have not anticipated. And there is consequences that has to be realized. And I believe that those consequences are that his tax revenues are not where they were projected. Thank you.
I wanted to make a comment and then Kim has her hand up.
Right. Thank you, Martha. Okay, uh, Andre, right on. Uh, I think you've got it right. And, um, I did want to say, um, had to do with, uh, just the overall situation here. It's, we can't predict. I think Brian's right on as well. We cannot predict what's going to be the outcome of this. I have read all the reports from the Joint Fiscal Committee. There's a lot of dire things being said. But, uh, I think one of the telling things to be, what got my attention was Commissioner French's comments last week, uh, to, uh, at the governor's conference. And I can tell he's worried and he's supporting all schools to consider additional S and E, S and, uh, social and learning specialists in the schools. And that he's genuinely, I believe, concerned about how this all affects, uh, students in the schools. And just, and I think we're right on with our budget. We should proceed. Thank you, Martha.
Thanks, uh, Kim?
I'm sorry. I was just recalling the meeting where, where we would ordinarily be approving consent agenda leaves and appointments. We really were pretty intentional to invite the administration to share with us their processing, to point to the ed quality standards or the class size policy that we have in. to point to the ed quality standards or the class size policy that we have in place to know that we've really thoroughly evaluated every hire and replacement and where we were able to perhaps reduce as we could. We're past the risk period. So our capacity to do too terribly much around personnel is limited. And that's as a larger component of our budget than any other piece at this point. The other piece, and it's a question. If we, is there any opportunity to consider applying fund balance from this year? If we were to have a surplus in this year to like a tax, it's called something, right? A tax, something reserve? I don't even know if those are legal.
We placed an, we placed an article on the, on the draft warning that would, if the voters approve it, would authorize any unaudited fund balance at the conclusion of FY twenty to be used for expenses related to COVID nineteen in FY twenty-one.
Okay, thank you. I didn't, I knew we had maybe discussed that a little offline. And I think that that's helpful for people to understand.
There's some talk too with regards to that becoming possibly a legislative action to lessen that. Right now, there's by statute, the audited balance of FY nineteen must be placed towards your tax, your budget in FY twenty-two. FY, FY twenty would have to go into FY twenty-two. Because you audited during FY twenty-one. So there's some discussion about that. I think Martha would say, because we've been in the same legislative committees at different times and listening to them, is that twenty-three doesn't look any better. Because twenty-three, everyone's twenty income will be used for homestead declaration and income sensitivity and everything else where, so it's, we're in this, we're definitely in a trough for a few years with regards to state funding and state capability.
I think I'm just appreciative that that is another tool in our toolbox. That that should be approved by the voters to be thoughtfully applied. And I appreciate that it is looking at more, as I say, sort of one-time expenses. So we don't create a cliff by our action in funding ongoing expenses with that. So I am grateful for that article and that tool in case we need to employ that.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. I don't see any other hands raised, so I'd like to call for a vote. The motion made by Todd is to rescind the proposed FY twenty-one budget as it has been approved by this one. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So Andre, you want to rescind the budget and start over?
Yes.
That's my vote. I said, I meant to say aye to.
Okay. Anyone else? All the supposed same name? Okay. So our vote is.
Seven and a half to one and a half?
Seven and a half to one and a half, yes. Natasha, do you have that? Okay, thanks. All right, let's move on to the morning. Brian and I have worked on this. We've worked with Chris on this. And Brian sent it out this afternoon. I don't know if everyone's had a chance to look at it. I guess before we go to that, did anyone want to talk about the CTE budget further?
The only thing that I would caution, and not about, not for us to do anything differently on the budget. I think statewide, they're grappling with how to do technology education, you know, tech ed remotely. And I do have concern that that changes enrollment for upcoming sessions. Whether or not they figure out how to have it lend itself in the same way to remote learning, if that were to be a need in the future, may just loom out. There is an uncertainty for families in their decision-making, so.
And for the tech center.
Also remember that there's a financial impact as people leave their high school and go to a tech center, which some districts may find to be, we've had districts speak about that burden before and then look to try to do things that would prevent or discourage participation in regional technical centers.
Yeah. This situation would end itself to more of that. I don't think there's any way we can make reasonable guesses about that right now. Okay, let's move to the warning. Any questions or comments about the warning?
I just wanted to highlight something that may not be initially obvious. And that is that the warning, it does not include any mention or statement about an informational meeting that would need to occur via Zoom separately warned. It has a different warning window. It doesn't require a thirty, forty day warning window. But there is a requirement that it happens within ten days before the Australian ballot vote. So we'll subsequently create a warning for that meeting and the technology to do it. There are some pre-described requirements to hold an informational meeting via remote, remotely. So that's not part of this one.
Okay. I'm not sure who had their hand up first, but Keely and then Diane.
My question on the warning was the language in the first paragraph, talking about the time of the polling places. I would assume that this isn't copied from a prior warning because it doesn't usually mention polling places in the first paragraph. But it says ten AM, at which time the polls will open, and seven PM, at which time the polls will close. I was just thinking it might be more natural English to say something like from ten AM to seven PM, but maybe there's a reason why it's worded this way.
I, I think it's the way it's been worded in the past. It's probably a longstanding tradition of wording it that way.
I guess what I'm saying is normally there isn't a longstanding tradition of talking about Australian ballot polling places in the introduction to our warning. Because the introduction to our warning normally talks about having a meeting.
I'm sorry, Keely.
It's like saying, we're gonna have a school board meeting at six thirty PM, when it will start, and at nine thirty PM, when it will end.
Right.
No one uses English like that. It doesn't make any sense. So I guess if somebody has a precedent where, yes, English is always used that way by the Secretary of State of Vermont, great. But if not, if we could please change it to normal English, that would mean a lot to me.
I, I believe that Chris has used that language because that's the way warnings are usually worded. I could go grab my annual reports and take a look.
Martha? I'm just saying. No, I'll interject to help Keely. And unfortunately, the wording, you're right, is it's archaic, it's the way it is, it's the way it's always been. It's stated that way. In this case, because we're not having it, an annual meeting before this meeting, this vote is the meeting. And so therefore, you are warning a meeting. So it's gotta be stated that way. I did not look at it as being awkward. I just looked at it as being, it's like, it's old English and we're stuck with it. Because it's the legalese that we're gonna operate with. So, you know, because when we have a meeting beforehand, we say we adjourn to the next part. In this case, we're not adjourning. We're going to have a informational meeting separately. The meeting is actually this day, where we're telling people, show up at ten if you're coming in person. And you got until seven o'clock to complete this meeting. Does that make sense? Sorry to interject Martha, but it's.
No, that's fine.
It would make sense if it were like between the hours of, or meet at this time, continuing until this time. But currently, it sounds like it's stating two separate meetings without continuity between them.
I, I don't have the burridge in front of me. I'd have to figure out how to get to there. I didn't print it off for me to see, but.
If you had the original meeting, I wouldn't be on this board anymore, raising cookie grammar questions.
Enjoy your company, Keely.
Me too. I am looking at the original warning. And the first paragraph warns the meeting in person. And it just says to meet at seven PM. And then the bottom goes to the polling places. And I don't see that combination of wording, frankly, on the origimo warning, or at least that which is posted at our website. So I don't, I don't know that that makes any difference whatsoever, but. And let me just ask, is it, are we not able to change it? Does that screw something up? Can we not vote on it if we make that friendly amendment?
No.
Your warning with your counsel. I mean, it's one hundred percent you. So I would imagine that you could do nearly anything.
You can change it if we want to. So let's change it. I can't imagine, as long as the, as the purpose is still clear. So Keely, what would you like to say?
I think it would make most sense to edit the word "and," which precedes seven o'clock PM, to instead say something like until seven o'clock PM. Does that make sense to other people reading the sentence? It would then read, hereby notified and warned to meet at their respective polling places on Tuesday, June second, two thousand twenty, at ten o'clock AM, at which time the polls will open, until seven o'clock PM, at which time the polls will close.
Well, that sort, that sort of sounds like you have to be there the whole time.
Still muted. Can we just say, on your, to meet at their respective polling places on Tuesday, June second, at which time the polls will be open from ten AM until seven PM?
That works.
Andre? Question. Isn't the polling, and correct me if I'm wrong, but wasn't, isn't it supposed to take from seven AM to seven PM?
I'm sorry. I thought I wrote to everyone about this. The town clerks, because of the pandemic, wanted to shorten the time that the polls were open. The state allows you to open anytime between seven and ten. So this is a request from the town clerks.
Did that, I placed the sentence in the chat, is that what we're?
I was just gonna try and do that, Brian, thank you.
That works. Worked for you, Keely?
I might put from ten o'clock AM before, at which time the polls will be open. Because "at which time" applies better to ten o'clock AM than to Tuesday, June second.
Could you just type it?
Give me one second.
Okay.
Why do we have to say, I'm sorry, at which time the polls will be open from ten AM until seven PM? Why do we have to say at which time they'll close? If they're only open from ten to seven?
I think that the element is that, you know, this is your legal counsel who represents dozens and dozens of districts across the state and has probably over forty years of experience. I mean, I think, I think there's probably lots of ways to do it. It just has to be determined whether it's a substantive need of the board or whether it's a preference of the board.
So I, I think it is important, I think it is important to say when the polls open and when the polls close. So I do think having that language is important.
I agree.
All right, are we all set now? Keely, you wanna read what it says?
Blah, 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 report to blah, blah, blah polling places on Tuesday, June second, two thousand twenty, from ten o'clock AM, at which time the polls will be open, until seven o'clock PM, at which time the polls will close.
That sound okay to everyone?
It still has the problem of my suggestion that it might apply to someone who have to be there the entire time, which is the opposite of the problem that I had with the original sentence, which is like, you can only be there at the beginning or the end.
I'm okay with it.
Sure.
Okay. So I have Diane and Andre with hands up. It's that because you just haven't taken them down or?
No, I, Martha had a question. At the, at the beginning of the warning, it talks about having election for the treasurer and the moderator, et cetera, et cetera. In the past, we've had a nomination from the floor. If this is by Australian ballot, there is no floor. So how are those nominations made?
So there's a provision in the, in the law that was passed about elections that says that people can, and this is gonna be true for people who are running for the legislature, that you don't have to do petitions during this pandemic. So if you're running, all you have to do is sign the form that consents to put your name on the ballot. John Sonnichens who McNamara will know that. So I believe they will submit those forms for the positions of moderator, clerk, and treasurer. If somebody else wanted to run, that he could also just fill out the consent form. Okay. Other questions on the morning? So it has the news, so everything that would be voted on from the floor is now Australian ballot, including the provision about borrowing money. There is the language that would allow us to designate surpluses from the present FY twenty fiscal year to be spent next year if we needed to do that around COVID nineteen. Anything else?
I think the only thing I think, because normally isn't Article Four on the floor?
Is that the, is that the?
That's the issuance of. So I guess I will just caution that we do whatever we can to have people understand that article. I think that that will, people who read it, I think, will be, have questions.
Yeah, I think, I think it will be important as we communicate to talk about why. I think adding the section that talks about receiving money from the ed fund helps to, might help people to understand why we might. How, might help people to understand why we might, but yeah. I'm, I mean, I've been at this for a lot of years and it's an article that almost always somebody says. Why should we give you the right to borrow money? So we'll have to do the best we can to explain.
Has it not said from the Ed Fund in the past?
Um, it didn't use to. It used to just be in anticipation of breadth or whatever.
Is it possible only because I think that's going to be like a third rail? Um, is it, it's probably ill-advised or maybe even illegal, the idea that in anticipation of tax. Payments, tax receipts, right? Aren't we? Is that not actually what's happening? We're just getting the payment from, yeah, nevermind.
No.
That would be illegal. Alright, I take that away, that idea. Keely?
Um. To what extent are we allowed to include explanatory information with a ballot? I think we ran into this issue with the vote. Couple months ago where a lot of people were voting on something that they didn't fully understand the implications of. Like can we put more info on the warning? Like this is something that normally is a floor vote and just ensures normal operations. Or include a piece of paper when we allow ballots? Like what are we allowed to do to? Explain what the votes are about, like what the clerk does in case people want to run for it?
I think you could put all that information up on your website. I'm not sure that you're allowed to include things like that with the ballot. Diane?
I think that the best we could do would be, think you're allowed to have a poster outside the polls that people could read. So the best would be that they actually have a poster and have it listed there. It can't really take anything in the polls that would persuade someone.
You can't.
But you can have it outside. We could put an easel or something outside polling spots. Um, I would suggest that we, you know, we use whatever media we can to get as much information out to people before they show up. Um, especially if they're doing it by absentee ballot, that they're not going to be showing up. They're going to be, be there so. And if they're all doing it from home, um, we've, we've got to reach out to them. Uh, but last minute, I would think we'd be able to put an easel. But we should probably get a legal opinion as to what we can do, but I think you can put. Information outside. You just can't bring it in to the polls itself.
Could our next meeting, um, which is next week, talk about the communications around this and things that we could do? And we could do some research and ask the kinds of things that we might be able to do. I also don't know if we will actually be going in a building. So I don't know where the easels, I mean, if they choose to do a drive up. Drop off, I don't know where that, you would probably do it at home, do your voting and then take it in if we're going to mail it. But anyways, I'm thinking that with timing, we should probably just. Use a timed next meeting for how we're going to communicate the budget. And I'm thinking that Brian and I could do a Zoom video and send it out that way. And there's other ways that we can get messages out about the warning.
Yeah, we may even want to consider another flyer. I think this is a bigger discussion than we want to have tonight. But Keely, your concept of can we do more to explain it in the article itself? I think it would be. I think it would be hard. You know, I think it would take a lot of words. Um, and I frankly don't know how much of that you can do. Okay, um, miss?
I was just gonna also just, uh, our communications meeting is next week. And, um, so we will have that meeting and then we will spend some targeted time amongst ourselves. Really figuring out the messaging that needs to move forward in light of the discussion now and where we are, so.
Yeah.
But that's after the full board meeting, right?
Yeah.
Hmm, okay. Well. Yeah. All right, Kim?
Um, it's a sort of a technical question because there's a lot that will be on these ballots. I wonder if it is in fact two sheets of paper, an Article 1 through 4, somehow it's indicated those are typically. Not Australian ballot. I don't really know, but maybe that's a technical question to inquire about. So that there is sort of a delineation between that which is historically voted from the floor. And that which is historically voted Australian ballot. It's, it's going to be a big ballot anyway. So, just a thought.
I, I think John Sonic probably has a lot of the control over that. I can write to John and Sue and, um, just see what he thinks. Okay, are we ready for a motion? I'll entertain the motion that we approved the warning as revised.
So moved.
Thanks Brendan. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Now I have to get my agenda up again. Thank you. Actually, Keely asked if we could take a five minute break during the meeting. It is a long time to go without getting up and stretching our legs. So I'm going to be come back at 8:55, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, so next up on the agenda is the superintendent's report, Beth.
Yes, so, um, and going back to my original of. Going back to reporting on the goals, I did end up putting things for, through COVID-19 and what we've been dealing with. So under the first goal, um, of closing the achievement gap, I did put our distant learning plan, our new updated ones. I gave, I shared with you some feedback from the Agency of Education on Phase 2, the Vermont. Um, Agency of Education did accept our Phase 1 as our Phase 2 plan, actually. Um, and said that we didn't need to do much more, except that we had like a few things to do. Although we did revise and we did, um, end up with a Phase 2 plan. We have really emphasized along with the Secretary of Education, that social and emotional learning is really important right now. Um, and to take care of one another. And so there's been a large emphasis on that. And in Phase 2, we worked with a four day, um, of lesson planning and giving and teaching. And that new learning and then Friday is a day for more for intervention. Time to, um, work one-on-one with a student or check in with students. Another time for, um, at the high school for advisories to work together and to meet. So some people were alluding to that Friday is a flex day. It's not a flex day where people have off, but it's a catch-up day and a day that we really felt was needed after going through Phase 1. Um, and families have that relief on a Friday if they need it. And they also have that one-on-one time to check in with a teacher. And then, um, the goal 2 with the communications, as you know, our website is constantly being updated. Um, we are getting back to our newsletters of going out on a regular basis to staff and to, um, families. And those were happening every other week and we'll go back to that cycle of doing that. Unless obviously we have emergencies or things that need to be reported. But instead of, um, almost a daily communication from EWSD, it'll now be on a, every other week in a newsletter. The new principals plan, I didn't realize that I would actually get it together with Ben after vacation so quickly. So as I was writing this, I told you that we would be working on the plan. I did put a plan in your folder today. And the goal of this plan is to try to the best we can to introduce new principles to the community and to students. So one of the first things that Ben will be reaching out and, um, doing a write-up. For the community and for, for faculty and students on each of the principals. And then also sharing that with, um, the Essex reporter. And probably Essex reporter will follow through as well as they have done in the past with more questions to do, um, their own piece. And then Ben is planning on reaching out to students, families and staff and community through an email and social media. And asking, um, to submit questions that we can ask of the principals. And then he will put together, um, that and each. He will put together the list of questions, um, choosing from them. And then each principal will then create like a Zoom video answering the questions and talking to the, um, community and students and staff. And then those will be shared through social media and other ways. And then, um, and you know, we talked about getting, I would love to get questions from students as well. And even in the, you know, we have Ashley Gray on this list too, that we want to treat her in that same way of sharing her information. And have, you know, questions from a first grader, um, and parents. So a mix in that to share their personalities and some fun questions as well. Ben did say he could have this done by the middle of May. And I said, well, that would be wonderful, but I think we should put at least by the end of May because we don't know their schedules as well. I mean, they're all working. They currently all have positions that they hold. So I think we have to go around their schedule as well. So that will, um, it's a way that we're getting the word out about our principals and having people get to know them through that. And as soon as we can be in smaller groups, um, or with people, we will definitely hold. Meet and greets and things. And I'm sure when they get on board, they will be looking for those as well. Goal 3 is the governance, um, model for EWSD board. And I think we have to put that on hold until we, um. Figure out when we can be together and working, um, well, through the budget as well. And it might end up being a Zoom, if, if we're in the fall and we're still this way, it could be a Zoom. I was going to ask him and Brendan and I will at another time, is there a book or something that we maybe could read over the summer to start? To get familiar with, with it and it give us more background knowledge. I can also, also, I see you both shaking your head, but I can also, I was thinking of asking Val the same thing. So we could do a book study if we start that way.
That was actually how Brendan led it in our district, actually.
Oh, maybe Brendan could lead the book study.
No, no, I didn't mean to throw that bus going his way. I'm just saying that was how we studied it as a board and went into it. Um, so.
Yeah.
It couldn't hurt. It's pretty dry is all also.
I, I remember you saying that, which, um, yeah.
But it was, I mean, if people are invested, it's good information and it sets a good context for the work, so.
Um, the supervision and evaluation, the new model, unfortunately, that really calls to be in classrooms and watching teachers teach and giving feedback. Although our principals are giving feedback because they are in those. In the templates that the teachers create on a weekly basis. So they are in those and they're reporting and I have been talking to principals about them. When I, um, I continue my, that's actually every other week, I'm meeting with principals and not monthly, but every other week. And so we talk about those learning templates and what they look like. And then also I, we spend a good chunk of our meeting talking about supporting our teachers. And the, um, health and wellness of our teachers and stress level. We have been really focused in on that. We had, um, as a leadership team. We had Jolie Van Lent come, who's a psychologist, a school psychologist. And she came and met with our leadership team to talk about ways that we can take care of our staff and to make sure we take care of ourselves as well. And so that's been a lot of my talk with principals as they do the same thing with their teachers. And we know it's stressful and we have many teachers that are teaching with young children at home at the same time and trying to figure that out and their own schedules. Um, I do see things in the chat, but I will go through, um, I just have one more goal and then we'll go to the chat and we can ask some questions. Um, the goal 5 is around the budget. And I think you will have stated today, um, at this meeting certainly where Brian and I stand with the budget. And, um, there's not a day that goes by that Brian and I aren't talking about the budget and what-if scenarios. And ever-changing information coming from the agency. And almost every other daily talk with Jeff Francis, um, the executive director for superintendents, so. And Amy Rex and David Young, who are in Chittenden County with budgets. That they failed the budget, but they still have to go to the voters and then myself, Chittenden County. So we meet often.
Okay, so questions for Beth. The chat was just that Liz had to leave. Okay, Kim?
Hi, I was just with respect to meet and greets or whatever communication we do around the principals. I think I would encourage it to be as soon as possible so that. It doesn't inadvertently derail budget communication or distract. Or have people thinking of it as an either or, what are they thinking? I just, I'd love that not to taint their welcome. Or taint the budget welcome.
Yeah, so within the next couple of weeks, we think that we can get this all done. And as I said, they also have jobs and I'm hoping that they can create a, you know, video. I mean, I would do that if I was getting a new job. I certainly would spend a weekend or an evening creating whatever the person, that people were asking me to do. So I'm sure that it will get done and within the next couple of weeks. I just, I just put the end of May in case we run into some, one of them that, and that could be that most of them get out. And one can't do it right now for some reason. Illness or anything could happen. I, I can, I feel like these days I can't say something for certain will happen. I'm always really cautious of that.
Other questions for Beth? Okay, I'm, I think I would just say once again. It seems like, you know, things are going well. It's impressive what's happening. I think, um, well. I, I think you sent us a lot of interesting materials. If people followed all the links, you could really read what the expectations of teachers are, et cetera, et cetera. So thank you for sharing all that. As someone who doesn't have a child in school, it's easy to feel quite far removed from what's happening. Oh, did you have a comment? Al, did you have a comment?
I was going to ask Beth on the, I assume attendance is being taken?
Yes, so what we do about that, it was in one of the documents. It talks about attendance, it's accountability, I think it fell under. We basically take everybody for granted that's here. We just say, yes, they're here for the week and they have to have so many check-ins. And then if we start to see that they're not checking in, then we actually call the family. There's, there's a lot of communications with families that are happening on an ongoing basis. And, and we do have some kids that have not engaged and we're starting to talk about. So what, how do we work with that family? That's our first go-to. The teacher talks to the principal, the principal calls the family, or the teacher reaches out. If nothing responds, then it's the principal. And then I'm also in contact and talking. We don't have many, but we do have some. And at the high school level, we're almost have a complete plan of how to do recovery for courses for credit. I also soon will be bringing and warning a change in a policy for graduation requirement because the requirements have to change from what we look at on the list. So that will come to you. It's not so much about the policy, but it's the procedure that they follow. So I have a meeting with Rob this week. So we're going to look at that policy and include Jackie in that and then get that to all of you for just the change and what that has to say. A little more flexibility is what, what we need.
Okay, my last question or concern has to do with the high school group in terms of their ability to do more, their ability to log into specific courses, to be in a more integrated learning and feedback loop, and their ability to take tests online. It can be open book, but at some point here, I think there are a lot of learning, very, and very well-done applications across the country that can help students in our packages of learning. And I, I would hope that our district is not looking for a massive software development effort because we don't have the time.
No, no, Al, we've been using Google Classroom mostly. We also, the Agency of Education is rolling out the virtual, which some students are already on, the virtual learning. And they, they have linked it to Canvas. So we are, Peter and I have a meeting on Friday that we'll be talking about that. We, we knew it was coming. It was kind of like behind the scenes at the agency that we kind of knew and we only knew because we had Peter. So we knew it was coming, but it wasn't in time for the courses to get up and rolling. So we will offer it to students or to teachers six through twelve. I think it'll be really helpful, especially if we're in, we find ourselves again in this next year, which I am assuming we will, either to start the year or once November, December hits with flu season and we end up doing this again. I think that that's when we'll find a lot of people using that virtual learning. We also, I want to stay open and flexible with being able to use that because there's already courses that are developed. And let's say a biology teacher has a course already on, you know, the virtual learning or on Google and they end up having COVID. Then they could actually just turn to the virtual and somebody else would teach it. So I think we really have to be able to reach out to them and use that. And it's free, so why not use it?
Right, and, and also it serves as an additional resource to the classroom environment.
Absolutely.
Tends to reinforce the material.
I mean. Absolutely.
You know, I just look for multiple avenues of learning. And I think it's really an important concept.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
I agree. Yep.
Kim, you have your hand up.
I was wondering, Beth, if you're finding our teachers to be collaborating on their work? It was something that Dan mentioned at the State Board of Ed meeting, the recognition of the capacity to really collaborate without being together. And so in thinking about things statewide, like the implementation of PBL and other things, best practices have the capacity to be shared a little more easily if people are thinking about that. And I'm wondering if we're seeing that happening to help lessen the load for each of our teachers individually.
Yeah, so we are definitely, definitely seeing that across the board in the district. What I'm noticing more is K five, and it's just because they have to teach everything, right? So I'm seeing it. I was actually, actually observing third grade. And when I go in and look, I see the same mathematics lessons and the same for literacy, tweaked for their own students. But that's one of the silver linings to all this. So we did our essential standards, right? We determined them. And out, as soon as this happened, it was like, okay, so what essential, during Phase One, we were looking to Phase Two. What essential standards are, are you really going to focus in on? And the grade level teams, especially K through five and six through eight as well. But it's just content, so it's a little different in their areas, the way they teach. But they were able to choose those quickly and really benefit from our continued PLC times. So those are still going on and we're finding them planning together, creating assessments. It's just, it's sped everything up for us. It's like where we wanted to be and just because of this, that's where we are. So it, it's been really exciting. I keep seeing the silver lining in so many things, especially with like the project-based learning things that are happening. And it's, it's actually exciting.
I'm wondering too, I was listening to you talk about flexibility and graduation requirements and immediately sort of went to PBGR, the proficiency-based graduation requirements, and imagining if they're, you know, if that was going to, that type of flexibility was going to lean in that direction of other ways for students to demonstrate proficiency.
Right, well, that's, that's another silver lining because we see that. And especially because at the high school level, they had to go from their ways of grading to all of a sudden pass, fail. But what does that mean and what does that mean according to a standard? So it's forced them into that proficiency-based grading in a very different way, you know? And then they'll be able to say, oh, we did it here. This is what it looks like when you back it up and you actually have the. So it, it really is, you know, I tease, I've said, if we planned two years' worth of planning to do online learning, it wouldn't have gone as well as it's going right now. It's really, and I just think people jumped in and did it. They didn't really have time to think like the pros and cons of it, we're doing it. And I think people are realizing that the teaming and working together is certainly beneficial. So, and we're finding more and more, and look how many Zoom meetings and things that Peter was saying are happening. It's like incredible. And, you know, those Zoom meetings are open, so I can jump into any PLC and thank them and then jump out and see, so it's, I can't do that when they're spread across the district. It's great.
Are, do we know if students are meeting in extracurricular like clubs? And maybe Tilly knows, I don't want to put you on the spot, Tilly. I just see that you, it looks like you're still there. But I know our students, at least from what I can tell, those on our board and those who I interact with occasionally, seems like they're working plenty. I'm just wondering if the other pieces of enrichment that Student Gov were, you know, do their teams have groups going on or the, the clubs? I was just wondering.
I don't know that, Kim, that's a really good question. I wonder, well, Tilly's here now. Tilly?
Some of them are still operating, like Student Gov has weekly meetings sometimes. Mostly it's just the committee heads, we go to those. And then we have like YRBS is still running. So I think it's a couple of them, but I think the ones like Red Cross Club and stuff aren't meeting because they have to be in person. And I think like ALC has been like communicating with kids, but I don't know if they've actually had any meetings yet. So some clubs are definitely still operating, but I don't think that the majority of them are. But yeah, I think kids are also pretty busy. So I don't know when the time for that would come because normally it's like before school or something. But yeah, I think it's, yeah, so some clubs are doing.
Thanks, Tilly. Beth, Katie Ballard is asking what their, the special education chart that is part of our document for, is that a public document?
It should be. I will check on that tomorrow.
Okay.
And make sure that it's either gets on our website or something, but yes.
Hey, Katie says thanks.
You're welcome, Katie.
Any other questions for Beth? All right, let's move on. Are there any task team reports? Thinking not. Local and statewide updates, we've covered pretty well. A lot of what's happening at the state level. Kim, did you have anything you wanted to?
I don't think so. I will say there seems to be unanimous support for the delay on Act 173. And all parties supported the one-year delay for Publix. The State Board actually felt as though the privates should be able to come online at the same time rather than giving another year delay on the privates. But most other parties were supportive of delaying both one year. And I think that that is what's going to go forward. It sounded today as though that language is pretty close to ready. The public comment period on the current rules is going to be extended, I believe, until the end of December, which was our recommendation at the State Board. And it looks as though that language is, has support from both the Senate and House Ed.
Okay, Patrick, did you have anything for a local update?
No, nothing really specific. I think maybe the only thing of relevance would be if for some reason the Select Board can't decide on a candidate to replace Annie, we will have to have a vote to replace her as part of a special election. So we will have to learn from example with what we end up deciding to do. But I don't think the timeline would realistically line up for that to all be held in one election anyway. So probably irrelevant, but you know, good to know.
More likely at the time of the primary, obviously.
Yeah.
All right, hey, anything else? I would encourage you to figure, fill out a meeting evaluation, especially if there are things about this format that aren't working for you or on any specific topic that we discussed tonight. So I will, unless anybody has anything else, I will entertain a motion that we move into executive session to discuss contracts pursuant to Title I, subsection three thirteen, section one.
So moved.
Thanks, Kim. Any discussion? All the who's in favor say aye.
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 Aye.